Here we go. I would like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting of October 6, 2025, to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Murray. I'm the councillor and chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. I would like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given, and if assistance is required, please see the Legislative Committee Coordinator, who is sitting over here. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Please ensure that your cellphone is on silent or turned off. The Town of Lincoln Committee of the Whole Meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. Closed captioning is available on all of our videos by selecting the Closed Captioning button on the bottom right of the video. Moving on to item number two of our agenda, which is Rural Call. Members of committee are in attendance with regrets from councillor Brunay. Councillor Ranjima will be late arriving this evening, and I assume also that councillor Pacharriba will be late as well. We have staff in attendance, in person and remotely. Additionally, we have the town solicitor in attendance this evening. Item number three, are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, Confirmation of Agenda. Do members have any amendments to the order of agenda? Seeing none, we're going to move on to number five, which is Recognition and Achievements. We will now consider recognition and achievements this evening. Our CAO will provide introductory comments regarding the above and beyond awards that are -- let me say that again, above and beyond awards that are being presented and announced to recipients. Mr. CAO, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Mayor Easton, members of council, and our staff that are in attendance this evening. Just a little bit of background on our awards, and then I do ask for councils' patience and indulgence as I do read the nominations and acknowledge each of the staff that are here this evening. A number of years ago, almost ten now, when I came to Lincoln, we started the CAO Awards. We've called them different things over the years, but really, you know, they were a way to recognize the outstanding dedication and commitment shown by our staff. Those who go the extra mile, or in other words, above and beyond in serving our community, supporting their colleagues, and finding creative ways to make a difference in how we deliver services. The awards are meant to highlight the people behind the work, the ones that demonstrate excellence, teamwork, and a genuine passion for public service. This year, we've made a few minor updates, as you heard from Chair Murray, to keep it fresh and inclusive. We've expanded the nomination process so that more voices can participate and added a few new categories that I'll speak of this evening. At the end of the day, the intent remains the same, to celebrate the best of our organization and the people who make it all work. So I'm proud to share tonight the first Above and Beyond Award, which is Project of the Year Award. This recognizes a team or individual that has successfully completed a significant municipal project with consideration for budget, timelines, planning, innovation, teamwork, and of course, community impact. Recipients of this award are chosen by the selection committee from a list of nominated candidates. The Project of the Year Award for 2024 goes to the Jordan Village Improvement Project, nominated by Dave Graham, Director of Public Works. A little bit about the project. It was a cross-departmental staff team of Walter Newbauer, Michael Gacknick, Liliana Bosnello, Brittany Bazluwski. Michael and Brittany have both since moved on to different opportunities, but their input was fundamental to the success of the project. And we have Brittany joining us again this evening after only being gone a few weeks. I'm trying to convince her to come back. This was a generational-type project with a vision that included a community anchor, safety and accessibility, environmental sustainability, economic prosperity, cultural preservation, aesthetic appeal, and inclusive design. Add in their connectivity and community pride. This project also aligned with council's priorities for a future-fit Lincoln, supporting economic development, tourism, and climate adaptation, to name a few. Key project innovations included the new signalized and realigned five-legged intersection, the creation of pedestrian square incorporating the museum courtyard, expanding public realm including pavers, wayfinding, a high level of landscaping, and a community parking lot. Improving public safety was a core pillar of the project along the King Street, 19th Street, and Main Street intersections, as well as upgrading active transportation elements. The Jordan Village Improvement Project also received a number of grants from the Niagara Region, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, and the Green Belt Foundation, as well as the Niagara Community Foundation. This project is a strong reflection and partnership between the town and Niagara region, and also received the Small Municipalities Achievement Award. Can I ask Walter Newbauer, Liliana Bosnello, and Brittany Bazluwski to come forward, please?
[applause]
Our next award is the Heroism Award. The Heroism Award recognizes an employee who takes an unselfish risk and/or spends significant time and energy helping others in a crisis or emergency situation. Recipients of this award are chosen by the selection committee from a list of nominated candidates. This year's recipients are Brian Danilic, Brett Scobie, and Jonathan Rice, nominated by their manager Frank Buffalino. A little bit of why these gentlemen are being recognized this evening. During the night of July 21, 2025, while responding to an emergency water main break, one of the water and wastewater maintenance operators sustained a serious finger injury. Brian, Brett, and Jonathan's quick thinking, compassion, and teamwork ensured first aid was performed immediately. The missing digits were found and stored for reattachment, and the operator supported and transported safely to hospital in Hamilton. Their calm, decisive response helped prevent further complications and provided much-needed reassurance during a very high-stress moment. Brett remained with the operator, offering support and comfort throughout the experience. He stayed at the hospital until the operator was discharged and then made sure he got home safely, continuing to look out for his well-being. Their quick thinking, compassion, and teamwork truly went above and beyond. Their actions reflect the highest standards of care and collaboration, and they embody the kind of dedication and integrity we strive as a team to have. This was the first such incident that has occurred at the town, and we recognize that it was a traumatic event. We would like to thank everyone else present that night for their support and actions. A round of applause for these gentlemen. Our next award is the Customer Service Award. This is given out to a team or individual and individuals. The Customer Service Award recognizes an individual or team who demonstrates superior service to internal and/or external customers. They truly embody the spirit and philosophy of the town's customer service strategy. Recipients of this award are chosen by the selection committee from a list of nominated candidates. This evening, the award will be given to three individuals. First, Devan Krip, nominated by her manager Julie Kirkelos. Devan's collaborative leadership has contributed to transforming the Town of Lincoln's policy administration into a more streamlined and customer-focused program. Her team-oriented approach supported the creation of a corporate-wide policy hub that aligns with corporate and council priorities, meets legislative requirements, and enhances service delivery. By working closely with the IT staff and departmental champions, Devan played a key role in developing a centralized, accessible platform for policy management, ensuring staff have the resources and information needed to serve colleagues and residents efficiently and effectively. The results have been substantial. Outdated and redundant policies were archived, new policies created. These important -- these improvements have strengthened transparency, accountability, and organizational efficiency, core values of public service. Devan represented the Legislative Services Department in delivering tailored training across all departments, encouraging engagement at every level, and fostering a culture of collaboration. She has also shared best practices with other municipalities, helping to position the Town of Lincoln as a reference point in the area. This initiative demonstrates strong customer service by enhancing internal processes to improve the quality, consistency, and responsiveness of services provided to the community. Devan's leadership and dedication set a positive example for service within our organization. And for those of you that don't know, Devan is leaving us very soon, going back home and taking on a similar job to the one she's doing there, and so we will miss her and wish her the best of luck, but a great way for us to recognize the contributions she's made. Round of applause for Devan, and then I'll read the next one. Our next award goes to Beth Libri, nominated by Courtney, and Courtney wrote, "It is with great enthusiasm that I nominate Beth for the Customer Service Award. As a leader in our outreach team, Beth brings not only energy and passion to her work, but also a deep, genuine care for both our museum and the wider community. Beth has been a recognizable and beloved face in Lincoln. Her approachable demeanor, unwavering positivity, and dedication to service make her a true standout. Whether she's organizing retirement home visits, attending community events, or welcoming guests to our site with her signature smile, Beth embodies the values of hospitality and engagement that are the heart of great customer service. What sets her apart is her role as an advocate, not just for the museum, but for the town itself. She makes every person she interacts with feel valued and heard. Her ability to connect with people of all ages and backgrounds has strengthened our presence in the community and deepened our relationships with key partners. Beth's work is not just a job, it's a mission she carries with heart and purpose. Her leadership, passion, and tireless efforts make her a model of what customer service should be. I cannot think of anyone more deserving of this recognition than Beth." Round of applause for Beth. And last but not least, Hadley Henderson. Hadley consistently demonstrates exceptional attitude, communication skills, and enthusiasm in every aspect of his role. Hadley brings a positive, can-do mindset to work each day. His ability to communicate clearly and professionally, whether with students, colleagues, or leadership, ensure that everyone feels heard, respected, and valued. In addition to his daily responsibilities over the summer, Hadley took on the vital role of student two-way representative. In this capacity, he serves and served as a link between the student body and leadership, advocating for student needs while effectively communicating corporate goals and initiatives. His proactive approach in his role has helped foster strong relationships and improve collaboration across the organization. Hadley is also a passionate ambassador for the town's core values. He regularly encourages others to embody these principles through both his words and actions, setting a strong example of integrity, respect, and commitment. Hadley consistently models what it means to go above and beyond. And he was nominated by Dave Warden. Round of applause for Hadley. So I'll ask all three of you to come up. And last, but definitely not least, the Team Spirit Award. The Team Spirit Award recognizes a team or department that has demonstrated exceptional collaboration and peer support in providing service to the community. Recipients of this award are chosen by the selection committee from a list of nominated candidates. It's not often we get a member of council that puts forward a nomination, but this nomination was put forward by councillor Adam Russell, and this award is presented to Dave Warden, our manager of public and open spaces, and Dave Graham, Director of Public Works. A little bit about the nomination from councillor Russell. I happily nominate both Dave Warden and Dave Graham for the Team Spirit Award. Both have continually epitomized the leadership and dedication to our community that any resident would hope for in a municipal employee. Day after day and month after month, both continually answer questions, provide feedback, and take action for the betterment of Lincoln. I am so grateful for their contributions and would like to acknowledge their efforts to consistently go above and beyond. Neither has an easy job in responding to concerns and questions from council and our community at large. Both answer each call with respect, open and honest feedback, and an action plan. I am sure the rest of council would echo this sentiment and our high appreciation for what the two Daves bring to our town. Thank you both for your time and your dedication to Lincoln. So, Madam Chair, that ends the official portion of our awards this evening and the ceremony, and I turn it back over to you.
I do have a note here that we have a video. Is that still something we have? All right, let's roll video.
[laughter] Coming to you on a top-secret mission. From October 6 to 10, we're celebrating Customer Service Appreciation Week, an international salute to the people who make exceptional service possible every single day. This year's theme, Mission Possible, because when it comes to serving our residents and community, excellence isn't just a goal, it's our mission. So here's what's on the radar. You need to recognize our achievements more. Our Above and Beyond Recognition Program happens at Committee of the Whole on October 6. Make sure to watch or attend. Share best practices. Here Andrea Chambers takes the spotlight at the KAMA EA Conference in Ottawa, presenting our customer service journey. Inspire the Team, a week-long program of activities, prizes, and inspiration to keep raising the bar on service excellence. Since launching our customer service strategy in 2023, we've been on a mission to elevate the resident experience, and I think it's working. Thanks to our Customer Service Strategy Committee and department ambassadors, external service standards have reached new heights. Next up, enhancing internal service so that the way we treat each other is just as exceptional as the way we treat our residents, and doing this all without sacrificing the outstanding external service we've become known for. As I said during our last mandatory training, customer service is non-negotiable, and to make the impossible possible.
I'd like to thank our CAO for being the leader of this phenomenal team and getting them motivated to nominate one another. I'd also like to thank those who nominated their colleagues, as well as the selection committee, for recognizing these exemplary staff members. And on behalf of council, our most sincere congratulations for all of the hard work that the recipients do, for your commitment to going above and beyond, and for your service to our community. Thank you very much. Now, we move on to item number six, Statutory Public Meetings. We have no statutory public meetings today. On to number seven, which is our Consent Agenda. We are now considering the Consent Agenda, inclusive of Heritage Advisory Committee Minutes of July 10, 2025. Would any member of committee like to remove an item from the consent agenda to discuss? All right, it appears not. So there being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by councillor Timmers that all items listed under the heading of Consent Agenda from Monday, October 6, 2025, be adopted as recommended. Heritage Advisory Committee Minutes of July 10, 2025. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open that vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open.
And the vote is now closed, and that carries. Thank you. Thank you very much, Deanna. We will now begin the Planning and Economic Development Committee Agenda. We have no delegations for the Planning and Economic Committee Agenda. We will now consider item number 8.2.1, Report PD-23-25, Committee of Adjustment Terms of Reference. The junior planner will provide comments. Ms. Tomano, please go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Good evening, council and Mayor Easton, as well as our CAO. My name's Elizabeth Tomano. I'm a recent addition to the planning team, so I'm going to speak to this report today. So the report proposes to repeal and replace bylaw 2021-21, being a bylaw to establish a committee of adjustment for the Town of Lincoln and to prescribe the procedures of the Committee of Adjustment meetings, and to establish a new bylaw within accompanying terms of reference. These updates are recommended as part of staff's ongoing review of best practices and the evolution of related policies and procedures. Through this process, staff identified the need for a more detailed terms of reference. The terms of reference will provide greater clarity, consistency, and accountability in the committee's operations, and will ensure that their roles and responsibilities are well-defined, decision-making transparent, and processes aligned with legislative requirements. New additions to the bylaw and associated terms of reference include sections clarifying the committee's mandate, objectives, reporting structure, membership, term duration, absenteeism, and remuneration. It is important to note that the terms of reference does not introduce any new policies or procedures, but rather it expands on the existing framework and provides a more detailed and clearly defined structure to support transparency and consistency as previously noted. The updated bylaw and its associated terms of reference align with the intent and purpose of Part 5, Section 44 and 45 of the Planning Act, dealing with the powers of the Committee of Adjustment. Therefore, planning staff recommend that council approve the updated bylaw in terms of reference as described in the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tomano. Do members of committee have any questions? Councillor Timmers, let me say that again. Councillor Timmers, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you to Ms. Tomano. So I went over this quite thoroughly today, and I'm quite happy to see that the member qualifications, you know, have been updated and included. I have one question around term. So I understand the members, as I was past Chair of Committee of Adjustment for four years, and so I was trying to recall what we were doing and what the changes are here. So members are appointed for the four-year council term. I guess my question for you, is there a limit, a term limit? I don't see anything here in the bylaw regarding that, unless I'm missing that point. Ms. Tomano?
I can answer that, through you, Chair. Thank you, go ahead.
Monica, thank you.
So there is no term limit. The members would have to reapply for the new term, so if council wishes to rehire the same members, they can do so.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you, Chair. That's good. Thank you, Monica. And Ms. Tomano.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? There being no further discussion, sorry. Who are you pointing at?
Mayor Easton.
I missed it completely, Mayor Easton. I'm sorry, I have no idea how I missed that. My apologies. Please go ahead.
It's because your eyes have to be in 19 places. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm also very pleased to see that this is updated, and also that whoever did it, I guess that was Elizabeth, redlined it, which was very, very helpful. Thank you very much for doing that. So a couple of things. On -- On page 11, under legal, it states that if council's decision regarding the application is appealed to the OLT, legal costs could be incurred by the town. And that's true, but it should also not unduly influence any decision that the committee feels is appropriate. So I think that that should be, I suppose, part of an orientation to the new bylaw, but I certainly wouldn't like to see people concerned about the costs. If it's warranted, it's warranted, and it is the democratic right of our constituents. I have a question about fence viewing, which is on page 29. I actually thought that fence viewers were a long-dead role for anybody. So what is the process about delegating a fence viewer in this day and age?
Thank you. And through you, Chair.
Monica, go ahead.
So when neighbors dispute a, or have a fence dispute, town staff try to work with each of the neighbors to come to an agreement, so it doesn't have to come to Committee of Adjustment. There are parameters, so the fence cannot already be built. So for example, if there's a disagreement on who's going to pay for the cost of the proposed fence, then, and they can't come to an agreement, then that is when the, that's when it comes to Committee of Adjustment. The Committee of Adjustment will make a decision on the cost sharing. So those are the types of disputes that come forward. If the fence is already built and there's a dispute on an already-built fence, that cannot come to Committee of Adjustment.
Okay, so maybe that's where I think there's a bit of confusion, because maybe it's not a fence, but it's the property line, and someone, Madam Chair, is allowing garbage to drift over into the neighbors. So is that a fence-viewing dispute, or is that something that goes to the bylaw staff?
Director Bruder, can you please respond to that?
Sure. Madam Chair, through you to the mayor. No, that's typically something that would be when you've got issues where there's refuse going on from one property to another, crossing a boundary line or not. There are some property standards issues that would be dealt with through our municipal law enforcement team otherwise, in a lot of circumstances as well, depending on what those circumstances are. That could also be a civil issue where it's just a neighbor dispute between two neighboring properties that needs to get dealt with in those means. So not necessarily part of this conversation. It's more of, yeah, either municipal law enforcement or civil.
Okay, so when we see the term fence viewing, we should take it literally and figuratively, that this is a fence and not any kind of a boundary between two neighbors. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Easton. There being no further discussion for this item, I have a motion moved by Councilor Mikulik. The committee received and filed for information, Report PD-23-25, regarding the Committee of Adjustment Terms of Reference, and that committee recommends council approve the draft bylaw, attached as Appendix C, and repeal Bylaw 2021-21 in accordance with Part 5, Section 44 and 45 of the Planning Act, RSO 1990 CP13. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open the vote. Deanna?
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. And the vote has closed, and it's carried. Thank you.
Thank you. As we have no further reports for the Planning and Economic Development Committee Agenda, I will ask the Legislative Committee Coordinator to transition to our next committee agenda.
Thank you, Chair. Mary, I'll be moving the gavel to Councilor and Chair Diane Rajima to assume the chair this time for the General Business and Finance Committee Agenda.
Thank you, Deanna. We will now begin the General Business and Finance Agenda. Item 9.1, Delegations. We have no delegations for the General Business and Finance Committee Agenda tonight. Item 9.2, Reports. We will now consider item 9.2.1, which is the Election Sign Bylaw, 2026 Municipal and School Board Election Report, LS 1025. The deputy clerk slash mayor of Legislative Services will provide comments. Ms. Crip, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. In 2022, the town reviewed its election sign rules and introduced a new standalone bylaw, which was 2022-28. The goal of this bylaw was to make election sign guidelines easier to understand and more accessible for candidates, campaign teams, and third-party advertisers at all levels of government, so that being municipal, provincial, and federal. After the 2022 Municipal and School Board Election, the Niagara Region clerks worked together to find ways to make election sign rules more consistent across the region. This led to a review of the town's bylaw with a proposed change to make it clearer and more effective. Some of the key updates include better definitions of terms like "election sign," "registered third-party advertiser," "election," and "vehicle," which all were updated to avoid any confusion. There are also clearer rules when election signs can be placed for federal and provincial elections, as well as new restrictions added. Candidate and third-party advertisers can now only place signs in the ward that they are running. Vehicle-mounted signs are limited to per vehicle, and they must follow the Highway Traffic Act. On private property, there are limits to avoid sign clutter, sorry. So residential properties can have one sign per candidate or third party. Non-residential properties, such as commercial or agriculture, they can have up to three signs per candidate or third-party advertiser, as long as each sign is placed at least one meter apart, and no signs are allowed at voting locations on election days. In some cases, like mixed-zoned properties, so those properties that have a residential portion as well as maybe agricultural or industrial on their property, those can have up to four signs per candidate or third party, and that would be one in the residential area, and then three in the non-residential area. So the agricultural or commercial could have three, provided that they are, again, one meter apart. For apartment buildings or condos, each unit can have one sign per candidate or third-party advertiser, also as long as they are spaced one meter apart. So for example, a 20-unit apartment building could have up to 20 signs per candidate or advertiser. However, it's the responsibility of the candidate, third party, to ensure that all election signs are safely erected or securely affixed to the locations where they are placed. And then lastly, to ensure compliance, the town has also updated its election sign deposit amounts. So candidates for mayor and regional councillor, they are to pay $2.50. That deposit remains unchanged from the previous. However, candidates for ward council, third-party advertisers, school board trustees, also now federal and provincial candidates, they must pay $200 in a deposit. Bylaw infractions remain at $25 deductions per infraction, and then at the end of the 90 days after the election, you would receive your election sign deposit back, subject to any infraction deducted. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, Chair.
Councilor Timmers, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Around the voting locations, is there a specific amount of feet that a person could be near a voting area? Or, I understand you can't put signs right where the voting station is, but is there a boundary set, like how many meters away you could be? Am I, I don't know if I'm saying that clearly. Like if you're 1,000 feet or 2,000 feet from the voting location, is that allowable or not?
So through you, Madam Chair, to the councillor. So election signs cannot be placed on the voting location. So if there is a property that is adjacent to that voting location, that adjacent property could have signage on it, the signage just cannot be on the voting location.
Okay, I think I misread that. Okay, I got it. Okay. So if you're beside it, on a property beside it, it would be allowed? Okay.
Correct, as long as that's not public property. It's private property, private resident, we cannot take that right away of a resident, no.
Okay. And just another question through you, Chair. Around road allowances along the edge of a road, I read if you're six feet from the road, that is allowed on a private property? Is that correct?
That is correct. So election signs can be on public property. With respect to public property in roads, no owner shall place or permit an election sign that is located six feet. So yes, it has to be over that six-feet threshold.
Okay. All right. And just one other question through you, Chair. I know last election, you know, some signs were moved that were actually legal signs, and they were removed for whatever reasons. How is that, what does that look like? So if you see signs that are illegal, that there, you know, there were last time on road, town property, on road allowances, is that a resident who needs to call in and file a complaint, or is that something that bylaw will just remove those signs?
Through you, Chair, to the councillor. So we work on a complaint basis. So if we receive a complaint that an election sign is placed incorrectly, we will work with our bylaw team to go out and take a look at where that sign is. We will work with that candidate or third party to educate first and give them the opportunity to correct that sign. However, if they choose not to do so, and our bylaw team does have to remove the sign, that's when the infraction will take place.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Timmers. Councilor Mikulik, you're next.
Thank you very much. Through you to Devan. So appreciate the effort we're making with these election signs. Elections are pretty interesting, pretty interesting times. There's signs all over this place, all sorts of different wild, crazy signs, and all sorts of different names and that. I'm just, I'm wondering about, like, where did this come from as far as, like, you have to be in your ward to have a sign in that ward? And I ask that because, like, if, you know, we talked about the ward boundary review, we don't have to run in our own ward, and I'm running in a different ward, and I want to place a sign in my front lawn, but I'm not allowed to now because I'm running in a different ward. Have we given that any thought? Like, were we thinking about that? And along that line, I'm going to add another part two to that question. If, like, when I look at the current Ward 3 and current Ward 4 boundary line of Victoria Avenue, and let's say I know somebody that lives on Victoria Avenue that lives in Ward 4, but I don't really know somebody that lives on Victoria Avenue in Ward 3, I'm not allowed to now put that sign on that front lawn that the same driver, the same educated voter would drive down. Is that what I'm learning tonight?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the councillor. So the intent behind only putting signs in the ward that you're registered for is to assist with avoiding confusion from your constituents, as well, it's also common amongst other municipalities that candidates or third party only do put the signage in the ward they're running for. Again, like I said, it just helps with that clear message that you are running in that ward, and that's your selection from the constituent perspective.
Okay, so that constituent, don't they have some sort of an obligation to know who is running in their ward? You know, like, do they necessarily believe that just because there's a sign on a lawn that that's somebody that they can vote for? Shouldn't they actually take a look at all the wild and crazy signs and say, no, I'm not going to vote for this Realtor, I'm not going to vote for this lawn cutter, I'm going to vote, I'm going to actually do some research and vote for a person that is an actual candidate? Like, and again, it might be a stupid question, but it's like, I look at all these rules that we're putting into place here and wonder if it's all necessary.
Thank you, councillor. And through the Chair to you. So it is up to each resident to do their due diligence and to make sure that they are aware of who they should be voting for or eligible to vote for. From my experience, running for elections, that's not always the case, and there is confusion as to who people should be selecting when there's multiple signage going on in your community. You start to get confused as to, well, who am I actually permitted to vote for? So this is a common clause in several election sign bylaws. However, I am at council's leisure if that's something you'd like to change.
Thank you very much for that clarification. And then my last question is, does this apply to neighboring municipalities also with respect to candidates, that sort of thing?
Great question, councillor. And through you, Chair. This bylaw was presented to the local area clerks as well as the CAO Subcommittee, so it is up to each individual municipality should they adopt it and any changes that their council wishes to make. What I can say for our neighboring municipalities is there is a want for a consistent bylaw, so I believe they will be bringing what we are presenting to their council as well. But there is a want to have a consistent and common theme, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mikulik. Councillor Mary, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to Devan. I kind of wanted to echo my colleague's comments, councillor Mikulik, regarding the requirement to have it on, in the ward that you're running in. I recognize that for some people, if you're driving down the road, then you may think, oh, I'm going to vote for that person, and then you show up at the election, and that person's not on your ballot, I suppose. But I echo, I think councillor Mikulik's concerns around that level of understanding. The other piece that I would like to just throw out there is that for those who are running in more rural wards, there are certain areas where people in the community congregate, grocery stores and drugstores, and areas that are not necessarily in their ward, but many people from their ward would be there. And they would be, the ward, the sign does say what ward you're running in. I just, I feel like that might be more restrictive than we need and may hinder some people's opportunities for getting their name out there. Again, if we're talking about new candidates who don't have the name-brand recognition of a sitting candidate, it could potentially limit the exposure that they have to the voting public. If we were uncomfortable with that particular clause in it, what would be the procedure for requesting a change?
Through you, Chair. To the councillor, that would be an amendment that would need to be put forward.
Thank you. I'll let councillor Russell go ahead. Thank you, councillor Mary. Councillor Russell, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the clerks department. Along the same line, just a question. Have we received any complaints regarding the advertising of candidates in wards or adjacent to wards? And again, I'm thinking, like, a lot of the, like, to councillor Mikulik's point, again, that Victoria is a main conduit that used to split two wards. King Street for us in Ward 1/2, it is also a conduit where, again, you can get signs on both that, again, the same driver's going to have the same opportunity to see both. So I'm just wondering, is there any feedback from the residents on confusion during the election and/or thereafter?
Thank you. And through you, Chair, to the councillor. Great question. I'm not aware of the specific locations you're speaking to. However, we have heard from election to election that individuals are confused for the candidates that they should be voting for based off where the signage is, and it is something that we were asked to look at across the region to have a consistent approach.
Okay, so follow-up, Madam Chair. So residents were confused in our municipality, or that was feedback from the region, or in that discussion group about what's happening within the region and other municipalities?
Through the, to the councillor, through the Chair. I'll just comment, as Devan's commented on this a few times. So I would say that from election to election, the comment has come up, councillor, from various residents that have said that they've seen multiple candidates, and not all signs... And not all signs do say which ward they're running in, they do have a sign. You also have to understand that there's a mayor, there's a regional councillor and various other things that are going on during election time. And so one of the things that we were asked to do after the 2022 municipal election was to take a look at the election sign bylaw. Some actually didn't have an election sign bylaw separate from their sign bylaw in some municipalities. And so to make sure that we are being as transparent as we possibly can be, not only for the public, but also for the councillors and also for the candidates that are running, that I do hear that, you know, is there some guidelines needed? I would say absolutely yes, there is some guidelines and parameters needed for clarity during the voting process and also during for provincial and federal elections. So I would say that all of this is, has been with great input provided by the clerks and what they've also heard from their municipalities in understanding that each municipality is going to make their own, you know, unique changes if they will, if they decide to do that. But in terms of what is before you tonight is something that we have heard across the region from various municipalities. And it's actually something that's very common amongst the municipalities across Ontario.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and through you, Madam Chair, just one last follow up. Would it be confusing in your mind if we made this to say, not only in your ward, but like immediately adjacent to it? And I think, again, I completely understand where, if all of a sudden you have like council members or again, people who are registered to run for council or any, any office, having their signs like internally in a neighborhood that they're not part of, I understand that completely. But again, it's those main conduit roads where, again, you may have people, depending on going which way they're going, you're going to have right of access to that sign, so it's immediately adjacent. If you look at that map, like, it is still kind of there depending on where that line is. So like, would that be a big issue if we made that amendment?
To the councillor, through you, Chair. I would say that, is it a big issue? I would say that you need to ask that candidate. And I say, and I would say that depending on where that boundary line is, you know, you definitely don't want to make things more complicated, but you definitely also don't want to take away from what the candidate's right is to place that sign on if they get the okay from the resident, right? So I would be very careful, I actually wouldn't suggest that, but I understand where you're coming from. This is just basically to provide some consistency in terms of, okay, so you are in Ward Two. Ward Two councillors that are on, on the list for nomination candidates, these are your candidates that are, are on the, going to be on the ballot. That's as, just as simple as I can make it.
Okay, thank you. And again, I would leave that to council. Again, I'd be open to that if anybody else would be interested in it, but I will leave it either way.
Thank you, councillor Russell, councillor Mickelik, go ahead.
Thank you very much, just, I'm going to beat on this just a little bit more, just through you. So what about, you know, when I'm reading this report and there's talk about pickup or vehicles, signs, how many signs can I have on my, there's two allowed on my pickup truck or my vehicle. I can put a couple on my wife's, put a couple on my kids' cars. I can put magnetic signs all, and we're driving across town. Like, I'm trying to really understand this logic and the confusion that we're possibly creating. Like, it's just, because these magnetic signs, they're not, I've never done it, but they're not expensive either, and I think I might next election if I choose to run again. I'll have moving, mobile. And again, I really want to be supportive of some sort of bylaw, but it's got to be well thought out as far as all the angles that can be taken, so curious about that.
Councillor Mickelik, I'm not sure I understood the question in there.
Is there a limit to how many vehicles I can have with signs on them?
Okay.
How's that?
Thank you, councillor, and through the chair to you. So each vehicle can have two signs on the vehicle. So yes, you are correct, you could have three vehicles with two signs each, you are correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mickelik, Mayor Easton, go ahead, you're next.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So if I have magnetic signs on my vehicle and my husband's vehicle and my son's vehicle and they happen to turn in to the town hall, can I leave those signs on? I was looking to see if there was anything in here about not having a sign on at any, any town-owned property.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Devan, can you answer that question?
I sure can, thank you, Chair, and through you to Madam Mayor. So you cannot park those vehicles on public property. We would probably receive a complaint and then be in contact with you to move your vehicle.
Okay, is that in the bylaw?
Sorry, I'm just going to pass it through to the town clerk who has something to add.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, but I just wanted to add that you can park the vehicle on public property provided that you have removed any kind of advertisement from the vehicle. So if you happen to have been driving around, you've attached those magnetic signs to your vehicle, prior to approaching a public property or town hall, we'd ask that you remove them and, and then you can park your vehicle on town hall. As you know, we're looking for a neutral, neutral zone.
I didn't see that here, is it, is it in this bylaw? I know that you can't do that because you've told me, you've told me this before, but I'm just, you know, I think it's-
We're just going to confirm, Madam Mayor.
But they also aren't very popular, so if they become popular, I think they should be in the bylaw.
Through you, Chair, so yes, section 4.5 of the proposed bylaw does speak to they are not permitted on, on public property. So yes, we do have that captured in there, Madam Mayor.
4.5. Okay, perfect, thank you very much. Madam Chair, I just have another question. We've never talked about having no signs and we weren't offered that as an option. And nobody's talked about it tonight. And apparently, nobody talked about it on a regional basis. So through you to Madam Clerk, what's being said about not using signs at all? Because some municipalities have, the council has made that decision or someone has made it, what would that process be?
So, Madam Mayor, I haven't heard of that. I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I haven't heard of no signs in a municipality. It just, it may have happened, I just haven't heard of that. And, and I definitely would say that I would caution that because I think that at the end of the day, we're trying to draw people out to vote. And, and I really don't want to take that away from, A, the residents or the candidates that have putting their time and effort into putting their name forward and really kind of stepping up to serve their community. And I don't see anything wrong with having signs in a municipality during election time. I think that it helps to advertise, A, that there is an election, please come out to vote, and, and B, get to know your constituents and, and start having those important conversations. So I definitely would really kind of ask council to reconsider if that is something that you are thinking. Because, you know, as a clerk, my, my biggest passion is, is a municipal election and really drawing residents out to increase the voter turnout. Because, you know, as you know, all these important decisions on this municipality are being made at this table. And so, yeah, I haven't heard that, but if that is something that's being tossed around out there, I would definitely think that it would have the opposite effect.
Right, well, Madam Chair, it's, I have, I've had that experience. I think it is an individual decision that's being made by some people. And I guess anybody has the right to, to do that. But I agree with the clerk, it, there are great advantages, but if it is more stuff that has to be disposed of, there are people that are going to be thinking about that as well. Okay, that's very good, I'm satisfied with the answers, thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councillor Murray, you're next.
Thank you very much, through you, Chair, to, I'm assuming, the clerk. There's also a piece in here that says no election sign can be illuminated. I do know that there are some business signs within the town of Lincoln that are illuminated that you can code so that they can change what they're saying. So, and, and last year, I, sorry, last election, I do know that there were some of those that had election messages on them. So do I understand this bylaw to say that if I had a sign, a permanently affixed sign that had LED lights and that was changeable, that I could not put election messaging on that?
Through you, Chair, sorry, I was just reviewing the bylaw and that's correct.
All right, so then, because of that, there are two things that I would like to bring forward as amendments to this, to this bylaw. And the first would be, I recognize the idea of having a sign that's got flashing lights on it and all the rest of it. But as we move into more signs being available that are, I know that when we originally talked about the business sign bylaw, we talked about being able to, in terms of Mayor Easton's commentary on not throwing things out, an electric illuminated sign that you can program for different messages regularly does mean that you don't have to be throwing your signs out. So I feel like if we could add wording so that a sign like that would be allowed, I think there would be value in that. And a second potential amendment, I, I recognize councillor Russell's commentary on the immediately adjacent and I have the same concerns. Again, Victoria Avenue used to go right through the two, the two wards and I think it would be really challenging to define what immediately adjacent means. So then I would also like to suggest an amendment that would allow people to place signs in wards in which they are not running.
Through you, councillor, or through you, Chair to the councillor, if you could please provide your wording to the clerk, and I can work with the clerk to get that up on the screen, pertaining to your one comment about allowing, allowing signs in any ward, that was one of the comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Murray, so we're going to wait for that amendment.
Sorry, Chair, did you, did you have a question?
I don't have a question. Just waiting for the-
Oh, thank you.
-proposed amendment to come up.
Okay, Chair, I will put the first amendment up on the screen.
Thank you.
So this is at section 4.2, no candidate shall place or permit to be placed an election sign for a municipal election in any ward that they're not officially nominated or registered in, that this be removed.
Okay, so are there any questions to that motion? Okay, go ahead and put the vote up.
That's now open for voting? That vote is now closed and that carries? And I will put up the next amendment.
Madam Clerk, as the Chair, I have a question. I don't have to move or move over to vice chair to ask a question, do I? No, no longer. Okay, I'm going to put my hand up and I'm going to ask a question to that motion. Yeah, yep, it's to this motion. And I think it's through to Director Bruder. My question is about, I, I think in our municipal sign bylaws, there's a reason that we don't allow illumination. What is that? Not just election signs, but our, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Counselor Enchima, that's just typically, as a result, you wanna minimize the amount of driver distraction and things like that in proximity to where vehicular travel is going. So, that's usually the impetus for such a thing, most of the time.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions to the motion? Counselor Timmers, go ahead.
I'm not seeing the motion. Can we put the motion up? Is it on our screen? I'm not seeing the motion. Okay, so, just a question through you, Chair. I'm not really clear what we're, what are we saying here? That illuminated be deleted? So, that illuminated signs would be allowed? Is that what we're voting on here?
Yes, the current, the bylaw as proposed restricts illuminated signs. So, Counselor Murray is proposing to allow illuminated signs.
To allow them.
Mm-hmm.
I just would, my question would be, is where are they gonna be located? Are they going to be, are they gonna be bothering neighboring properties? Like, I think we need a little more detail around these and a little more rules around where they can be displayed and how they're displayed, and how big are they? Because this is very vague to me. So, maybe through to the clerk, I don't know, is this enough information here? Like, it seems very vague. Like, what can you put? What does that mean? I could put a giant billboard illuminated with flashing lights on my front field? Well, it's illuminated, though.
Through you, through, through, through you, Chair. So, that clause is actually under the general prohibitions. And what that clause is, so 4.3 is with respect to the general prohibitions, no owner shall place or permit to be placed illuminated, has flashing lights, or rotating parts. So, that is how that clause reads. So, currently, you are not able to place an election sign that is illuminated, has flashing lights, or rotating parts. What Counselor Murray is trying to do with that clause is remove the illuminated portion, so illuminated signs are permitted. So, I believe Counselor Murray used the example of a business that already has one of those illuminated signs that you can change that rotating message on. That's the example Counselor Murray provided. I'm not sure if that provides some clarification to you.
It does. So, now that we've, we're going to allow a person to put a sign in any ward they want, we could have a person in a, from a completely different ward with a big flashing, or not flashing, a big lit-up sign downtown Beamsville, because they have a member, a family member, friend who owns the business there. It could be at a main intersection downtown, and it's not their ward. I personally can't support that. I think we're going a little bit over the top here, and I like that we're limiting how many signs can be placed on each property. I think that's a really good step. But now to, I don't know, I think this is a whole different can of worms that we're opening up, and I can't support that. So, I won't be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Timmers. I don't see anybody else in the queue to ask questions for that motion, so go ahead, Deanna.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. And that vote has lost. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So, if there are no questions to the report, then we'll move on to moving the main motion as amended. Do we want to put that up? I know that I have a question, but I'll wait and see if anybody else has any questions. Okay, thank you for that. So, if nobody else has any questions, I'll ask. I had sent an email out earlier on today because I know that the bylaw restricts, for example, how many signs you can put on a residential lot in, within the urban boundary, how many signs you can put on in the agricultural area, on an agricultural piece of property. It says you can put one sign per unit on a multi-residential. So, my question was if there was an apartment building with 60 units in it, can you put 60 signs on that lot? And I think that would be very distracting. Who's gonna do it? I don't know. Somebody might do it, if it was on a corner, and somebody might put 60 signs out there and just jam them in there with a meter apart. So, I just spoke with a clerk, and she clarified that the intent is that, following in some other municipalities, they have bylaws that say if there's 60 units, or 20 units, or 15 units, and each person at each unit wants to support a certain candidate, they can have a sign on their balcony, for example. So, I'm wondering if we can get some advice about how to make that a little more clear in the bylaw, that that's the intent? Because as it's worded to me, it looks like somebody can put 60 signs on the ground of a 60-unit apartment building.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. The bylaw does specify it's per unit. So, the intent of that clause is a condominium or an apartment with multiple units, we'll say 20 hypothetically, each unit could have a sign per candidate, and that's because we don't want to infringe anyone's human rights to put up signage. So, they could be on the seventh floor and, yes, have a sign affixed to their balcony, but the onus, when they come do their election sign deposit, the onus is on that candidate or third-party advertiser to ensure that those signs are affixed appropriately.
Okay. Can you just remind me where it is in the bylaw? Because I'm trying to find it. I had it earlier on today.
Section 6.3, and then the clause pertaining to responsibility is on the sign-off form when candidates or third-party fill out their form and sign off on that deposit.
Okay, I'm just gonna read, no owner, person can, shall be permitted to place or permit to place more than one election sign per candidate or third-party.
Yep, so just that last clause there, that of multi-residential properties, then one election sign per candidate and/or third-party advertiser per unit will be permitted, providing that the election signs are a minimum of one meter apart.
Per unit. It's just not clear to me that it's supposed to be on the actual balcony. Some apartments don't have balconies. So, you know, maybe you can suggest wording that would make it clear that the sign is to be affixed to the unit itself and not on the ground.
Through, through you, Chair. So, some, some units don't have balconies. They might want to affix it to their, their door, or their, their, their window. So, where that individual places that election sign, that's up to each individual. That's not up to staff. We don't, we don't police where you're gonna place that in the unit.
Thank you for that, but it can't be on the ground. You can't put 60 signs on the lot.
That's correct.
Okay, so can we find wording that makes that clearer? Because to me, it's not clear that you can't put 20 or 60 signs in the ground around the apartment building.
We can provide that clarity on each election application sign permit that individuals complete prior to erecting any signs. We'll make sure that's clear.
Okay, but if it's, all right, if it's not clear on the bylaw, you know, do we have the teeth to enforce that?
That would be an amendment put forward by yourself to add into the bylaw, if that's your wish.
Yes, I would like to, actually, but I'm looking for some wording that would be, I can try and come up with some wording if you didn't, okay. Multi-residential, one election sign per. Something as simple as these signs are not to be, I honestly don't know.
Through you, Chair, I wonder if the word individual unit might suffice to make it clear that it's per unit for that clause. So, just adding in individual.
I think it would be probably more effective to say that they're not allowed on the lot, on the ground themselves, but I don't know how to, I don't know how to word it for that.
Through you, Chair. So, just for clarification, if a resident of a condo building is on the ground floor, their signage will be
You're right.
On the floor.
Yeah.
Or on the ground.
Yeah.
So, so, I think the way we have it worded, I mean, we can do some education regarding that piece, that if you're on a balcony, you affix it to the balcony portion. I think that can be an education piece. We can work with constituents or candidates and third parties when they come fill out their forms.
Well, I would prefer that it be more clear in the bylaw, but honestly, I don't know how to, I don't know how to do that. Maybe the Director of Planning has a better idea. He's good at coming up with wording for excluding things in zoning.
Maybe just one minute to think about that. I'll see if I can come up with something.
Yes, it's struggling with it.
Okay, Chair, I will put the amendment up on the screen.
Thank you.
So, through you, Chair, just to provide some clarification. So, we will add in not-ground mountain unless a ground unit to Section 6.3 to provide that clarification to you.
Let me read that in its entirety, then. This is what the 6.3 will sound like. No owner, person shall be permitted to place or permit to be placed more than one election sign per candidate and/or third-party advertiser on any one piece of land zoned residential, unless the private property consists of multiple residential properties. Then, one election sign per candidate and/or third-party advertiser per unit will be permitted, provided the election signs are a minimum of one meter apart and not ground-mounted unless a ground unit. So, if you have a ground unit, you can put it on the ground.
That's correct.
If you don't, you can't. Any questions to that? Mayor Easton, go ahead.
I recently, I recently saw signs in the Hamilton Ward by-election on pieces of property where the houses were quite small, a wartime-type house. And so, people did have multiple signs. But at least, there was equity. It was chaos, and everybody was in the same level of chaos. So, I don't know how you change the rules and then allow, you're going to allow a certain amount of individual interpretation as well. It's just going to happen. So, on that basis alone, I would rather see signs closer together and rather chaotic. If that's what people want to do, then change the rules, which could be even further changed, that then the staff have to interpret. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support this amendment, but I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, but we were already, Madam Mayor, restricting residential lots to have one sign per residential lot. We're already doing that. This isn't, this seems to be an exception to that, where it doesn't clearly say that you can't have 60 signs. You could have a very small piece of property with an apartment stratified, and then you could have, you know, 60 signs on that lot. So, we're restricting them so that's not, I guess, visual clutter on a small residential lot, but I don't think that we're clearly restricting them on a lot that has an apartment building. So, it seems to make sense, you know, we're agreeing that we should restrict the amount of signs on a residential lot, but we're not agreeing that we, on the same-sized lot with an apartment building, that we should restrict the amount of signs. So, if we're, if we're proposing to restrict the amount of signs because of visual clutter and to make it clear to people that live in that ward, I would like to see it further restricted, and that's why I put forward this motion, that it's clear that you can't completely clutter an apartment building property on the ground with tons and tons of signs. But if we want to allow that, you know, we don't have that many apartment buildings, but if it happens and somebody doesn't like it, we won't have the teeth, I don't think, to, to say, get those signs out of the ground. Yeah.
Sorry, we need to turn Madam Mayor's microphone on.
Oh, sorry. There you go.
If you're talking about an apartment building, then, you know, people that have their signs on the, at the ground level, and people that have their signs on balconies or whatever exists, in windows or whatever, is that completely equitable for everyone involved? It may or not be seen as that. So, I'm just suggesting, if there's going to be chaos, if somebody decides to do that and have 20 signs, which doesn't seem very prudent, but that maybe we're just contributing to another problem of equity.
Okay, I think that people are allowed to put them on their, on their balconies, and the people on the ground level will be allowed to put them on the ground. So, I don't see an equity problem, but I'm hearing what you're saying, Madam Mayor. So, are there other questions to this motion? There are none, so go ahead, Deanna.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open.
Chair, after the vote is completed, can I just make a couple of comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote has closed and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you Julie, do you want to go ahead and make your comments?
Thank you. Just to the, just to the Mayor's concerns, and I had actually alluded to this to you today when you had reached out about this particular clause in the bylaw. So I just want to make clear that any candidate requires residential permission to place that residential sign. So I just want to make that clear to, to everybody. So if there's any kind of confusion about that, Madam Mayor, so when placing a sign on private property, you need to gain that permission from that owner. And so it's, it's not that anybody can just, bless you, can place a sign on a property without gaining that first. So I just wanted to make that clear in case that wasn't already.
Thank you for that. Okay, so, we will now consider Item 9.2.2, Report LS 1125.
Sorry Chair, we'll have to go to the main motion for Item 9.2.1.
Oh right, you're right, yeah. Thank you.
And that vote is now open. And the vote is closed and that is carried as amended. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. And we will now consider Item 9.2.2, Report LS 1125, 2026, Council and Committee Meeting Calendar. Do members of committee have any questions? Counselor Murray, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you to the Clerk's office, I'm assuming. In terms of moving the, the meeting so that they all begin at 5 o'clock, I know that when we originally changed the timing of our meetings so that some of them were going to be earlier, one of the arguments at that time was that for planning and economic development, when there are delegations, that 5 o'clock is challenging for the public to be able to be here and participate in terms of, you know, a lot of people working until 5, kids, dinner, that sort of thing. So then 6 was a little bit easier in terms of public engagement for things like that. So my question is, more so, have we received, have we had challenges? Have we had issues with meetings, some of them at 5, some of them at 7, that there has been confusion and that people haven't known what time a meeting started or have not shown up at an appropriate time for a meeting because they were confused over the different start times?
So we have had some questions from some delegations who are used to coming to a meeting at council and then having to delegate at committee of the whole, perhaps that started at 5. So there has been some questions about that. There has been some questions from council members as to what's the start time. I forget. Some, some of the comments has, I, I find this confusing and I have to double check. And so yes, I would say that there is some sort of consternation around the start times for sure. And I think that it does speak to some consistency that's required. I would say that taking a look at the amount of delegations that we've had over the course of a year, no one has actually said that they have had any difficulty really in coming at the specified start time that we've heard. So I, I think the 5 o'clock start time is sufficient. And again, I would say that, you know, if you are delegating, you have various resources provided to you such as written, hybrid option, attending remotely and/or in person, provided the person knows ahead of time. People make the effort if they want to come before council or committee. So I haven't had any complaints to that.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you Counselor Murray. Counselor Reim, you're next.
Thank you Chair and Gima. Thank you Julie and Clerk and the rest of your staff for this report. I appreciate a proactive report like this because lots of planning takes place a year ahead of time. And for all of us, it's good to be aware of these, even though it's an election year, it's good to be aware of these dates. I do have a concern, I'm going to echo Counselor Murray's concern about 5 o'clock start times and across the board. And I realize there might be more of a personal opinion here than, than it would be for the, for the general population. But I understand that the harmonized and the, the flow and continuity to a, to a common start time. And I do realize that there's cost savings involved. But 5 o'clock is a start time, and I think for, again, the majority of people, there is different, there is different shift times, there's different work schedules. I realize the argument can be made that if you really need to be here, you'll make it for a, whatever start time there is. But I think in general, our constituents, our residents still deal in a, you know, 7:30 to 9:00 start time and a 4:00 to 5-ish end-of-the-day type of time. And I think the, I think the adjustment to all at 5 o'clock is, is asking a lot, especially, I think last year worked well with our 5 o'clock for our general business finances, we are today. But our planning meetings and our, our council, I feel they should stay at 6 o'clock. I think this gives the opportunity for the public to, to not only serve on council, but also be present and to delegate and receive achievements of recognition. And so yes, I would support a, continuing with the current situation is with 6 o'clock start times. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Reimer. Counselor Timmers, go ahead.
Thank you very much Chair. I, I tend to agree with my colleague. I know it's been a bit of a, a work in progress and there has been some confusion at times, but it's something new. And I agree that planning needs to remain at 6 o'clock so that people who want to delegate or just attend the meeting are able to be here. 5 o'clock is difficult for a lot of people over, you know, especially if you have children or it's dinnertime, basically. So I would support keeping it as it is. Just one other question, totally different topic, I didn't see it in the report, perhaps I missed it. All of our committees are, our advisory committees would be staying at 6 PM start through to the Clerk's, Madam Chair, if that is correct?
That is my understanding. However, if committee chose to change that, they can put that forward in their terms of reference and that can come before council for, for their approval. But right now, yeah, there's no change to that.
Okay. Okay, so I, I would support keeping it as it is instead of going all to 5 o'clock. I think if we are going to make a change, I would support moving everything back to 6 o'clock. So, thank you, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you Counselor Timmers. Counselor Mikulak, you're next.
Thank you very much. Through you to Julie. With respect to the 5 o'clock in particular, is there any cost savings from an overtime perspective or any perspective financially?
Thank you Counselor. Through the Chair to the Counselor. So the start time staff overtime, it naturally fluctuates, as you know, depending on the meeting length, workload, complexity. So it's, the intent of this is not just about the cost savings, but providing consistency. I would say that it, it's kind of difficult to measure, but the cost savings are there provided that there are certain staff that are, do receive additional compensation depending on their pay grade. And, and so most of the time, you know, the senior management, corporate leadership team, you know, that doesn't make a difference to us, we're here regardless. But I would say that the other resources required and indirect efficiencies when the preparation time, report coordination, administrative support, all of that can, can lend itself to additional costs when needed. So, but we do ask staff to really kind of utilize their flex time where appropriate and, but yes, there is some additional cost to that depending on the staff that attend these meetings, absolutely.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I have another question unrelated to that particular piece, but through you to Julie again. With, with respect to the meeting calendar, the meetings that we have, we have a planning meeting dedicated to planning, we have other committee meetings to their, and this was all brought about because we found that once upon a time, planning was a heavy, a lot on the go. And what I'm seeing, maybe it's just me, is this past year, we've not, it's just not been, in my mind, the meetings have been as busy as they once were. You know, I look at committee, you know, CSI, like Community Services and Infrastructure, there's, there's nothing on the agenda for this evening. There's not been a lot that I can see that we really need to have the two meetings a month. And maybe others may weigh in, but like, and I bring this up because when, when, when these meetings are on my calendar, I, I say no to other things. I put a lot of weight to these meetings and, and it's frustrating when they get canceled. And, and I did, did a little bit of research, we canceled four meetings last, this year so far, and the year's not over yet. And it's frustrating when I said no to other engagements or other commitments, only to have a meeting get canceled. And I get it, like, you know, there's a blackout, you can't have a meeting, but I just, I find it, I'm just wondering if we can consolidate these meetings and spend less, you know, perhaps have a longer meeting that gets a lot more done as opposed to having two, three, four meetings a month. Is that a possibility? Has anyone reached out to you with respect to that?
Thank you. Through the Chair to the Counselor. So Counselor, I can understand that it is somewhat frustrating when we plan meetings in, in advance. However, that's, that's just, you know, something that we need to do to provide notice to the public as far as in advance as we can. We, we have made mention that these meetings can change at, at any time. And, and it gives flexibility to council, it also gives flexibility to, to staff. But as you mentioned, you know, there has been some due to weather, power outage. We've also had some technical issues that sometimes have occurred for us to, to do that. I would say that we have actually consolidated meetings where we can to find efficiencies. And council will know that sometimes you will see an email saying that, you know, we've consolidated a meeting just because we know that a next agenda may be short. And so we've perhaps maybe added stuff from other agendas to feed on to another one and, you know, it may lead to a longer meeting. But, you know, we try to find efficiencies where we can. We do have a report forecast that we review every two weeks at the CLT table. And that's really kind of based on, you know, projects, initiatives, council priorities and status. It might even be related to provincial requirements that we need to bring before council. So some, it, it fluctuates, it ups and flows as, as definitely projects evolve and the complexity around some of those things. So you will sometimes see, some are lighter, some are heavier. And that just, it really does depend on the business at hand. I would say in terms of planning, you know, that is something that we have been working with Planning Department a lot and Director Bruder is here tonight. And he knows that our staff work with his staff quite, quite closely in terms of those applications that are coming forward. And, you know, it's really based on application timelines under the Planning Act and, and when certain things are brought forward for review. And once that is, there's a, there's a timeline that's triggered. So, you know, it really does depend.
Thank you for that answer. I, I just, I just know that we've delegated a lot of, you know, we've, we've, you know, that sort of thing. And again, it's just the agenda items that, you know, there's, I'm just not sure if, you know, if we can get away with just having fewer meetings that are perhaps a little longer, but a little less on, you know, the whole evening or the, you know, for, I don't know about everyone else, but for myself, you know, saying to my family or saying to others, sorry, I can't attend this event, I can't do this because I've got a, you know, committee of the whole meeting of some sort. And then finding out like a week before it's canceled or even that night. So that's, that's why I bring that up. That's, again, that's just me. So, thank you.
Thank you Counselor Mikulak. Mayor Easton, you're next.
Thank you, thank you very much. I mean, we could make a change. Well, first of all, let me say that if my count is right, there's five of nine counselors who work full-time. So the 5 o'clock time, I could see that that is problematic, particularly if you're not working in town. Or it's a great day and you're doing outside work and you need to work an hour later or maybe two hours later. I, I think it's really making it tight. However, we could move to a traditional committee of the whole, which eliminates committees and has a committee of the whole and whatever is on the agenda is on the agenda. And we would start at 6 o'clock and when we're done, we're done. And so, you know, that's a, that's an alternative. And there are lots of municipalities that work, work that way. And so if you have, if there are times when you have a very light agenda, it doesn't really matter. It's just not, I mean, you're just not, there's nothing to consider. So, I mean, that's, but we wouldn't do that with this schedule. We'd have to have a serious discussion about, you know, about the procedural bylaw. So anyway, that's, that's my, my comments. I just, when you have over half of your council that is working full-time, I think it is very difficult to make an assumption that their day is going to end and they're going to go home and they're going to get something to eat and then they're going to come here for 5 o'clock. That's a, that's a quite a substantial adjustment.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Counselor Murray, you're next.
Thank you very much Chair. I will just speak to you Mayor Easton, I am starving. Just FYI, no dinner tonight. I, I, I feel like I'm, I'm hearing around the room that a 5 o'clock start across the board is, is challenging for other people as well. I'm wondering procedurally, personally, I, I, I don't mind if everyone's, like every other meeting it seems to be is, starts at 5 and the others are starting at 6. I think there is value in starting a little bit later so that the public, as to Mayor Easton's point, has a chance to get home and, and, you know, give the kids some supper and get here before the, the delegations begin and the conversation begins. Procedurally, so I don't, I, I would, I would be very willing to accept either the idea that we keep it status quo or that we change for every meeting starting at 6. But those are two options. So I don't know procedurally how I would find out which would most people prefer. Yeah, but which amendment? Would I amend?
Status quo.
Okay. So then I will, and then if people vote down the status quo, then we could say we'd like to vote for it all to be at 6. All right. So then I would like to suggest an amendment to this that would keep the status quo in terms of committee of the whole that are planning an economic development and council to start at 6 and the remainder of the meetings and workshops to start at 5.
And for clarification, Counselor Murray, that's the status quo?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Deanna.
Thank you Chair, I'll just work on that motion and I will put it up shortly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. which is status quo.
Okay. That's pretty straightforward. Councilor Murray, you okay with that wording? Okay, so let's vote on that.
That is now open for voting. That vote is now closed and that has carried. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So next, what do we do? That's it for that section of the agenda. Is that, is there, do we still have to vote on the main motion? No. Yes. I hear a yes. As amended, right. Okay, thank you. Okay, so there being, I don't see any more questions, so there being no further discussion for this item. I have a motion moved by, um, Councilor Murray.
Um, councilor, did you just say Councilor Murray? Chair?
I did because-
Yep. Nope, that's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilor Pachariva isn't here, so, yeah. That council receive and file for information report LS 1125 regarding the 2026 council and committee meeting calendar, and that the committee approve the proposed 2026 council and committee meeting calendar attached as appendix A with the amendments, as amended. And the wording says with the amended start time of 5:00 PM, so I'm just gonna say as amended.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
That is now open for voting.
Um, through you, Madam Chair. We're just going to cancel this vote, and we're going to revise the wording. So we're just going to cancel, yep, we're going to go back in here. Chair, Deanna's going to go ahead and open that vote again if members of council would like to, uh, cast their vote. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna read that out since the wording's changed. That committee receive and file for information report LS 1125 regarding the 2026 council and committee meeting calendar, and that committee approve the proposed 2026 council and committee meeting calendar attached as appendix A with start times as status quo. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Status quo.
And that vote has closed and it's carried. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, item 10 on the agenda, confidential items. We will now consider agenda item 10, motion to consider confidential items. Before I read the motion or we move into closed, I would like to explain what will happen for those watching the meeting online. First, there will be a closed session statement with the Legislative Committee Coordinator. Uh, she will go through that for sta, uh, staff that will be attending the closed session remotely. Once that is completed, we will move on to the, we will, we will move on with the motion to move into closed. Staff will be turning off the live webcast during the closed portion of the meeting. Once we have completed the closed portion of the meeting, we will resume with the live webcast and carry on with the public portion of the meeting, and we'll read the motions in public session. I will now ask the Legislative Committee Coordinator to conduct the closed session statement for those attending the closed sessions remotely.
Thank you, Chair. All members are reminded that any discussions in closed session are to remain confidential as per our procedural bylaw and our code of conduct for the council of the Town of Lincoln. Before we begin, I need each member that is attending electronically to confirm the following, that you understand that matters are to remain confidential, confirm no one else is present with you, confirm no one else can hear this closed session, confirm that you are not using any electronic devices other than your tablet, computer, telephone for the video conferencing, and confirm that you are not recording this portion of the meeting. If you acknowledge all of the above, please reply with I understand and confirm to all of the statements as I read your name aloud. Director of Finance, Treasurer Charlotte Tunikadis?
I understand and confirm to all of the statements.
Thank you. Town Solicitor Tom Holinsky?
I understand and confirm to all of the statements.
Thank you. And Solicitor Stephen Weiss?
I understand and confirm to all of the statements.
Thank you very much.
So I have a motion moved by Councilor Murray. Under section 239 of the Municipal Act, notice hereby given that committee adjourned to closed session in order to address item 10, Part 1 as follows, pursuant to section 239 2E litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality, and F, advice that is subject to solic, uh, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose pertaining to legal, legal matters. I will now ask our Legislative Committee Coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open.
Thank you.
And it's now closed and that's carried.
Thank you. Our Legislative Committee Coordinator will now proceed with the technical requirements to move into closed session. Deanna to confirm when ready to, oh yeah, so, sorry, I wasn't supposed to read that part.
Sori I.T., can you please make Chair Rajima the chair? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I have a motion moved by Councilor Russell that committee resume an open session. I will ask our legislative committee coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you. Now I have a motion moved by Councilor Mury that committee receive and file the confidential update and that staff move forward as directed in closed session as it relates to item 10.1 pursuant to section 239-2E litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality and F advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege including communications necessary for that purpose pertaining to legal matters.
I will now ask our legislative committee coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you. That vote is now open. And the vote is closed and that carries.
Thank you. Now I have a motion moved by Councilor Mury that committee receive and file the confidential update and that staff move forward as directed in closed session as it relates to item 10.1 pursuant to section 239-2E litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality and F advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege including communications necessary for that purpose pertaining to legal matters. I will now ask our legislative committee coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you. That vote is now open. And the vote is closed and that carries.
Thank you. Now I have a motion moved by Councilor Mury that committee receive and file the confidential update and that staff move forward as directed in closed session as it relates to item 10.1 pursuant to section 239-2E litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality and F advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege including communications necessary for that purpose pertaining to legal matters. I will now ask our legislative committee coordinator to open the vote.
Thank you. That vote is now open. And the vote is closed and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 on the agenda is committee remarks. Do we have any committee remarks? Seeing none, item number 12 is adjournment. There being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned at 7:34 PM.